So I call the town of Groton Planning and zoning commission meeting to order. First item is a roll call outside here. Michael Kane.
Here.
See so long.
Here.
And we have one person on the. By electronic.
Yeah, Kevin.
Kevin. Anyone still here?
Excellent.
Handcuffed. So. There's shy Steve. So I'll have you Kevin sit for Steve who to check.
Thank you. Will do.
And we have a quorum. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have November fourteenth meeting. Let's set the motion for.
I would make a motion to approve minimum meetings for the meeting of November fourteenth.
Does anyone have any corrections? I'll second that. Oh, second. Does anyone have any corrections?
Maybe a clarification. On where it says page thirty six, talking about the native plantings and everything.
On page five, page three of the minutes, page five.
Page three.
Right. So where it says page thirty six, that first line there eight point one, the commission preferred twenty four inch diameter breast to height.
Was it the opposite?
Well, this is to show on the map as I understand it, and maybe it says to be highlighted because otherwise it makes it look like we want something smaller.
To be shown on the map. Yeah, okay. All right.
Just to clarify it.
Oh, you mean where it went. You mean what we were.
Yeah, that's right. The reason for it.
Okay. Anything else? I had one editorial comment on top of page five. On the first paragraph, the last line. Where it says guidelines out of the regulations and include in a separate, I think you're missing a word or maybe it should say with inclusion or. Or including in or something. There's some, there's either a word missing or. I mean, it's the regulations with you could say with inclusion, including or. Going out of the regulations to include in a.
Yeah, or included.
Yeah.
And included in a separate design.
It really means they're going to be shifted to it.
Right.
So you could say tool included.
Okay.
Or some words, I don't care.
Okay.
There are no other corrections and we'll vote on on the motion to approve the minutes as of November fourteenth as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, next we have Colonel Ledger to states. Oh, public communications. I'm sorry, public communications. Does anyone have anything? Report staff of anything? Does anyone in the public wish to address us tonight? That's not part of the agenda. Could you step up to the podium and state your name and address for the recording?
You can pull that out.
Is that okay? Pull it closer.
Yeah, you can pull the microphone out of the scene.
Andrew Porella at Seventh Torreberg Lane in Groton. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Is that registering Deb on that? Okay, so a couple of comments I have to make. I did speak at the first council meeting last week, I believe it was. I do have grave concern about the approved Long Hill Road site. I believe it's three thirty Long Hill Road or no, five eighty perhaps. Where this new gas station supposedly is going to be presented or the land was bought. And there is blasting going on. I have filed an kind of a email complaint to the police, excuse me, the fire department who issues the blasting. There's, I'm feeling the blasting four miles away where my house is off of Wayne and Torreberg. So I have a serious concern that that site, first of all, was approved, I believe in January this past year. And my concern is that I think that site is not the proper site for that gas station. Also, in addition to that, there are residents to the actually would be the north part of that site. If you're going east. The other direction, it's downhill, but it's north. Which are being severely affected. One of the residents is here tonight. She may want to speak who's right next to that particular site. The problem that I'm foreseeing is not just one of environmental unfortunate loss of green break. However, but also the impact that's happening on the neighborhood. The east side of Long Hill Road, you know, when I bought my property about eight years ago, I was a little concerned because I was buying near a residential and commercial. Business district, but I'm back quite a bit, you know, down on Wayne Road. However, the residents in that area, I was surprised that the zoning did approve that. And the other concern I have is I didn't see, I could be wrong, but I didn't see that there was a public hearing called on that. When you're putting a commercial development, even though it's zoned commercial that close and on top of a residential area. It would really seem appropriate that we would have a public hearing. So the residents that are going to be directly affected and the other. People that live in that area or that are using those roads are going to be affected. We had similar things happen when there was proposals for Claude Chester during the school renovations, when there was an accident on ninety five, all the. For example, the traffic would back up onto one seventeen, hence down to Fort Hill Road, Aquanic Road and other roads. We just had another horrible accident which did the same thing. So it's not only just a geographical, environmental, residential, commercial concern, which it gravely is. It is also a concern of the impact of the traffic flow. There was a fatality at the intersection of Meridian Street. And the shopping center where M and T formerly People's United Bank is located. So there is a real, real concern. I believe there's another application tonight. For a changing oil possibly like, I don't know if it's what the name of it is, like a Jiffy Lube type of facility or garage there. And Deb and I have had a brief conversation. I've been to a lot of meetings and I'm not, you know, this is not directed towards anyone particularly in the planning department because I know she's working very hard like they like you all are. But the comes down to the boards and commissions with approvals. And it's really, really, really important if we want to keep this idea of planning and development to be balanced in the town. I bought in the town of Groton because I wanted to stay here to try to balance that out. The city has a lot of things going on tonight, I believe also, but that's another issue. But this is a main part of our central district and we've been, a lot of us have been speaking out. There were other people there. Several trees were cut down. I know they have to put in so many new trees if there is a development and I hope that's enforced. But I really think that site should be reevaluated. There's a lot of other sites. Some of them are a little further up on Route twelve. My suggestion is, and I don't know if this could fly, is to give these people that bought that property, I think it's Jared Corporation. Give them a land swap. There's a lot of properties. That are just sitting there that I think the town owns and you don't want them on the list of non taxable property. So I'm trying to give ideas out here and that would be an idea of some vacant properties that might be a more appropriate spot. For a gas station where you wouldn't have to blast and affect the residents. Also, the green break between if you're going north. Well, actually, south to north or east to west over by the town hall and going north up Long Hill Road, you don't really have any green breaks except way back. And that's really important for development because you want to have some space for people to relax and parklets. And I've been keep saying parklets, parklets. Another property which I'll throw this out is I'd like to see the property across from Applebee's. I think it's. I think it might be a six hundred number across from the fire station, the Baquonic Bridge Dash Long Hill Fire Station that I think that was donated land. To possibly be designated a COVID nineteen remembrance EMS park. It's right across from EMS. It's a nice location. We're going to lose these properties and then our street's going to look like West Town Street in Norwich. I used to work up that way. And it's just a hodgepodge of gas stations and a traffic nightmare. We're getting there. We are getting there, but we can stop it. You people are crucial. I can go and I can, you know, call Deb up and I very graciously yet there have been some concerns and actually there was a police. Complaint filed, which one of the other planners did is working with those residents on. They may be doing a lawsuit. You don't want that. It just holds up progress. So I don't know the answer to this. I think it should be revisited and I know that the staffing is really trying to get these properties to be tax. Producing properties. But then the residents aren't going to stay there. Another example, which doesn't isn't on this commission. Look at what they did on Eastern Point Road, all those houses. Some of them have used, some didn't. They could have taken those houses like Con College does and rented the houses for some of the executives, but they tore them down. Pfizer, we when I was on the city council, we asked for a buffer zone. And I said, well, you want the land swap with the golf course? We want a buffer zone. And Dr. Weisman was graciously called me. And he said, what do you need? I said, we want a buffer zone. Unfortunately, they tore the houses down. That's the buffer zone, but that they wanted to keep their property so they could build. And now they've torn buildings down, which are non taxable, well, property or not producing taxes probably. So the planning part of it, the zoning part of it and the coordination with a council and RTM, I'm going to be there now. Working together somehow to make it better for everybody because when we travel up those roads and we want to sit, go to a nice place. You know, a restaurant, I've heard time and time again, people want another restaurant, a nice fancy restaurant. I know business people in other towns that would buy land over there, over here, but it's just, you know, that property I think went for three hundred and something thousand, I believe. And it's what a good deal, but maybe not the right spot for that gas station. I think that needs to be reevaluated. Land swap, baby. Maybe Deb can work her magic and talk to somebody. There's properties over by the tire place warehouse tire accessories. There's a property there. I would try to initiate it. I hope I can get your support on this. I know it, you know, and public hearing, I think there might have been a serious mistake on that. So thank you for listening today and go ahead. You want to come up?
Wait.
I can't. He has to recognize you though. Yeah. Okay. So that would be one and maybe she can continue. Okay. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vijay.
Could you speak up? So because we have to record these. You can take that, take it right out of the holder if you want.
I'm audible now?
No, you can pull it. Pull it out.
Am I audible now? Okay. So my name is Vijay. Good evening, everyone. My address is thirty Sunnyside Park, Groton, Connecticut, zero six three four zero. Just to add few more points to what Andrew was mentioning, my house is like four hundred and fifty feet next to the new gas station. It's, it's right like. If you walk like four fifty feet and there's a gas station and my main door entrance is like, that's the distance. So my concern is the safety issue. Because it's all those tanks, fuel tanks that are there. If something heats up, this is like a property safety concern. It might, it might catch fire. And, and also I bought this property. It was, it was emotion for me because my first house and now I don't feel safe to live there, just not because of. Gas station. It's also because all the gas station that are in Groton, I don't see them. They're that close to a residential property. They're near malls, but we live in the house twenty four by seven. So. My concern is forget about my properties. Equity value is going to go down, but it's most important is like, I don't feel safe anymore to live there because the gas station is like right under my nose. And I have an eight year old child who gets down from the bus. Who takes a bus, which is like next, next to the gas station now, the whole zoning is blocked. So these are the concerns. As a resident, I don't feel safe anymore to live there and I can't afford right now to get a new property and. So I just need your help. How, how this can be, how you guys can help us with this. Yeah, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address this? Anybody with their hand raised on the. Screen. Okay. So we'll move on to next item. Subdivisions. Have Colonel Ledger Estates discussion of surety bond.
Thank you. I'll just briefly set this up for you all. I think you saw in my, my staff report in the agenda packet, this is regarding the Colonel Ledgerd Estates subdivision. This was a subdivision that was approved in May two thousand and twelve. It is still valid. It involved the extension of Deerfield Ridge Road from the Deerfield subdivision over to Colonel Ledgerd Estates. There's a small cul-de-sac that was built off of that Imogen Drive and there was going to be realignment of the intersection with Quaker Town Road, which is at Colonel Ledgerd Highway. Okay, fifteen lots, thirteen of those lots have either people living on them or are under construction. Subdivision regulations require that we hold the last two building permits until all the public improvements are complete. And so we are holding the last two building permits. The work on the subdivision has, has been fairly slow. The roads are paved, water is available and sewer is hooked up, but not all the sidewalks are complete. The play area is not completed. Street lights, some of them are energized, some are not. And, and we've been, we've been getting some concerns and complaints from folks who are actually living out there about, you know, when will this actually be done? So as part of the subdivision approval and a bond was posted for the work. Has to be a bond for public improvements has to be posted prior to transferring lots. So when the lot started to be sold, the bond was posted for three hundred thousand dollars. There's a copy of that in your file. It's a surety bond. So the surety bond, as you probably saw, calls for the work to be done as of May twenty twenty two. Obviously, we're in twenty twenty three and the work is not done. So the town attorney has notified the insurance company, the bonding company that we would be talking tonight. He's also notified the owners of the subdivision. So the owners of the subdivision and we've been talking ever since that letter went out. So the, they are still paying premiums on the bond. So the bond is still valid. They are working to find a contractor to finish the work. As a matter of fact, Public Works Parks and Recreation and I have a meeting with a prospective contractor next week. To talk about what all needs to be done and the standards to which it needs to be done. I'm not looking for a decision or action from you all tonight. This is the start of the discussion. The owners are here to let you know what. They believe their schedule of work is. I think the work really needs to be done by, by summer. I mean, we need to wrap this up. There's, there's definitely some things that are missing, but it's not, it's not like a new road. It's, it's, you know. Finishing the sidewalk network, finishing the recreation, something that could easily be done in six to eight months. I just for the residents who are living out there, I think we need to finish this up. So one way or the other, either the developers doing it or the town pulling the bond. I think it needs to be done. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the folks who are building the subdivision, who own the rest of it and they can kind of give you what their progress has been and what they expect to finish and what time they expect to finish it.
No, not one of the others.
No, you're representing them. Absolutely. These folks here in the front are.
I'm Leo.
There we go.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Leo Choman, I'm with Randall Realtors and I've been working with the subdivision for a long time, also a Groton resident. What happened in the beginning, we had a contractor, Peter Sacco, who was paid to complete all of the infrastructure. In the subdivision. And in the beginning, when I got involved, every time I got to the subdivision, it was like two guys with a shovel and a pitchfork. Standing around that didn't start moving till I got there. I know that the Eck houses have paid him money. And for a contract to complete all of the infrastructure and at one point in time, he bailed on the project. Never to be seen again. So from there, we kind of went to piecemeal. Where the guy who was building the houses, Ken Boucher, started doing some of the stuff and arranging some of the stuff. But his specialty obviously wasn't doing. You know, wasn't doing that kind of work. Then at one point in time, Mr. Echos had a stroke. And that kind of made it a little bit hard for us to kind of put everything together. I didn't have the plans to the subdivision. Still don't have the plans to the subdivision. So I've been trying to communicate with Deb. And she's educated me on everything from bonds to what needs to be done. And, and I realized that. Everybody's been very patient about it. So we started, we had meetings just a couple of weeks ago, right at the subdivision. So we are meeting with like, there's Cardinal Landscaping is going to be doing some of the work. They're talking to another contractor to try and put the whole package together for the rest of the work. And Deb, if you let me know when the meeting is here with those contractors, I'd be glad to be here. If you could let me know, that would be awesome. Just so I, one of us knows everything that's going on. But it wasn't totally an intentional foot dragging. It was just kind of, we started out with incompetency. And then we had some physical, mental roadblocks along the way and we're trying to get this back together and get it done. I was the one taking the, some of the calls from the people in the subdivision because I'm the face that's there. And I know Deb Jones took some of the grief from the residents in the subdivision as well. And I don't hide. I go in there and talk to the residents there as well. I'm not sure. If this is the format for some of the questions that I have relative to the work that needs to be done or that's in meetings and.
Yeah, it would be with the public works department, really. I mean, they, they're the ones who will inspect the public improvements and will recommend to this body to accept them once they're done. So it needs to be done to public works standards. They're really the best folks to talk to.
Okay, is that what that meeting is going to be?
That is.
Okay, yeah, I'd really, I'd like to be there. I will. Do whatever it has to be done to push whoever needs to be pushed to get it done. Thank you.
Does anyone else?
I'm Steve Eckhouse.
Could you speak close to the microphone?
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm Steve Eckhouse. I lead the owners of the property. Unfortunately, I had a stroke before. Couple of years ago and having. Problem choosing my words, but. Excuse me if I. Feel free to ask me anything. But. We expect to be. We actually should be, should have been finished by now, but we ended up with a couple of. People that disappeared. Although we had contracts and the like. They just disappeared on us. But hopefully. As Deb indicated, that will be done. Within the next four months, for four, four to five months. And, and I think, I think we're, we just have, we're just on the edge of completion. If it wasn't for winter. A lot of the stuff could be done as we speak. You have any questions?
Okay, well. Is there anything else that you wants to be? Identified right now, I open it up to the commission and for any questions. I'll start with you, Hal, if you have any.
I don't. Well, I guess just because somebody's going to ask. Generally, what's your, I hear your schedule is four to five months, but like, when will you start to do what? When it's come, say, March?
Well, as soon as the weather permission that. We're able, able to. To do, do things that will stay as opposed to being ruined by weather.
Okay, then you have a. Itemize schedule that starts at some reasonable time.
Yes.
Did you have any questions?
I have questions, but they don't need to be answered at this time. I can, you know, I would rather wait to see how the discussion goes with public works, what we learn.
You have any? Questions soon?
Yes, I think this may be more once you finish up with public works, but a lot of these activities. You, it'd be difficult to do them in winter, but some of them are not, I wouldn't think. But that's really the expertise, I think, of the public works can opine on that. But I think I would really like at this point, since everyone's waited so long, is a specific schedule of when this is expected to be done, each phase of this. Not just some general, you know, four or five month thing. I think we need to look at every element of these because some can be done now and some probably not. So I think that'd be extremely helpful and that will give us confidence. That perhaps this will happen. Out of fairness to the people who are living there and who want to live there, so.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Kevin, did you have any?
No, I was just picking up on what Hal said. I'd love to be able to see have, has. Have they submitted an actual plan to town planning and public works? With the next four to five months, what Hal said, has there been a plan submitted?
No, there has not. One thing that, that I've talked to them about is just what Sue mentioned, getting a detailed schedule. And frankly, I'd like to see a signed contract as, as well before the next time that we take this up.
So I agree. And that's where I was going, Deb, where we'd love to see a package that gives us the confidence that this is going to be completed. Certainly, we've listened, I think, here this evening, but a package that shows contracts and timeframes and commitments would be very important. Thank you.
So is there really a list of?
There is, and I think it was included in your.
Well, there was a list of total amount of work.
Right.
It came up to be four hundred thousand.
Exactly. Exactly.
But that's the total.
That, that is all the remaining public improvement.
That's remaining.
That is remaining. Right. It was based on an October.
Okay.
October inspection.
That's a relatively current.
It is.
That is more money than.
It is.
Than the bond is for.
That is correct.
So how, if the town has to. Finish this, where do they get the funds?
So I'll be honest.
Lean on the properties that aren't sold?
So our, our goal is to have the owners complete the project. All right. If that is not possible and the town has to call the bond and do the work ourselves, Public Works will prioritize. The, the work that's remaining, mostly based on safety. And we will discuss that with you all at that point. If there's some work that needs to be eliminated. Because if, if the town ends up pulling the bond, the bond, the bond is only three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So that is all that we can use to complete the work.
But can we put a lien on the properties that aren't sold?
I, I can explore that with the town attorney. I don't know.
Well, I, yeah, if we have to make a decision.
Yep.
We should probably understand.
Oh, absolutely.
How it works.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm, I mean, my goal here tonight is to make sure that these folks know that we're serious about pulling the bond, that we prefer not to, but certainly will if need be. So. I think what I'm hearing from you all is we want a contract and a detailed schedule based on the inspection. By the next time we talk about this, and I'm not saying the next meeting, because the next meeting is the public hearing for short term rentals. So I'm thinking it will probably be the second meeting in January. Okay. So that'll give you.
Let me just indicate that we have already completed the dead end. That, that we, we got a contractor. That, that we, we got a contractor too.
So some of the work has already been underway?
Some of the work was completed in the last couple of weeks.
So we can get a, an updated report, you're saying at the end.
At the se- at the second meeting in January.
Would be the.
Right.
Goal.
That's right. That's right.
And then we can.
Well, right, then we'll talk about it again.
It's realistic to continue as is, then we'll do that.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Which would be the preferred.
Absolutely.
But in the event, there's still a shortfall. If things don't go as we would wish them to, um it would be very helpful to know what value is left in this deal. Then is it possible that town to put a lien on?
Right, well, we'll definitely explore that if it turns out that we are calling the bond and, and I will. Calling the bond is not as easy as just going to the insurance company and saying, could we have the check, please? It's, it's a fairly long process and sometimes the insurance company is not um cooperative.
Understand.
Okay. But we have done it in the past, so successfully, so.
Good.
Yeah, but it's a slow pro- as you said.
It is a slow process, yes it is.
But the preferred method is.
Absolutely, have these folks do it.
Develop.
And then, right, exactly, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks for coming, I'll be in touch.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, very good.
Alright. So the next uh item is ours. Go ahead.
We have a couple of comments, uh Andrew with seven, Parello seven Torreberg, B. Shea. Okay, just on that point, on the uh gas station on Long Hill. She is now uh been telling us that there is no legal there, she did not receive a legal notice. That there would be a substance type of material that would be possibly endangering near her residence. Um so the safety issue of the four hundred and fifty feet, I don't know the exact zoning laws on that, maybe Deb can uh inform us on that after. Um the um issue of explosive materials being that close to the residence. And if there's a gas leak or a fire from oil. The other impact is, was there a geological impact on the runoff and where that runoff from? The tanks that are going to go on the southern part of the property. And the uphill, of course, traffic report, I'd like to see a full traffic study that was done. And also the blasting cracks in the house, the uh other resident has indicated she or does have cracks and that's. I don't believe the blasting is done, I think it was, we had talked and it might be going a little bit longer. However, I don't think they're blasting now, there may have been somebody stopping that, but I'm not sure, because I'm not there during the daytime. So these are serious things, I'd like some type of report sent to us, and I think you know my address, Deb, and the phone number and her address. Um we'd like some follow up on this as soon as possible, I have not heard from the fire chief, I know there was a new fire chief appointed. I did send one to Mr. Bednarz, I think he was informed the chief, the new chief. And I believe the police report that was filed on the parking that was addressed by the planning department, I think Tabitha is, was working with. A couple uh residents on the end of Sunnyside Park. Um so there's already violations there, and I'd also like to know. If the bond, what the bond is for, and if that bond should possibly be pulled, and I'm glad that was brought up tonight. Um sorry for those developers, but if they're not doing things properly. Then the long term effect on the residents is going to be there, and the commissions and the planning and the town's gonna have to take liability for that. Thank you so much, those are, if they can get back to me on that, Deb, and it just, you know where I am, so.
So we're going back to the agenda. We have our site plans for take five oil change. S I T twenty-three zero 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 two.
Yes, and I see the team here, so I'm gonna take a minute to promote everyone so they can share their screen and speak to you, so first, uh let's see.
Hello, Deb, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, um and I think we, we have Bob and I believe you can speak as well, is that right, Bob?
Bob, let me know, he dialed in, uh and the end of his phone number is zero three zero nine.
Yep, yep, I've, I've allowed him to talk through that mechanism, that's right.
Great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you for taking the time. Um to uh learn about our site plan here and discuss it, this is Jeff Kimberly, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Jeff Kimberly speaking, I'm gonna be the, uh or I'm intended to be the owner and operator of the facility. I just thought before Bob goes into the site plan, um just give a little context on the business. Um this is a very simple business model, it's a very small footprint, it's a seventeen hundred square foot building. Um there's already a clearing in the area, so there'll be no clearing of vegetation or no, no blasting. Um it, it, this site was historically a gas station going back to the seventies, and then it was a restaurant. Um and it's been vacant for quite some time. Um our footprints are, are for the building are rather simple, there's no basement, um there's no underground storage tanks. Uh there's no lifts in the building, there's just a simple little pit that the, that the team slides under to do the oil changes. The used oil is stored in a secure system, so it can't get out of the building. And we recycle the used oil, actually in some of our facilities, we use it to heat the building, uh but that's not what we're proposing to do here. Um and take five is a very simple model, they like to bring clean, fast and friendly service to the neighborhood, right? And employ good folks, keep cars running cleaner for longer. And uh as far as traffic goes, it's a very mild impact, it's thirty to forty cars per day. So relative to a gas station or a restaurant, it's actually very minimal. Um so I just wanted to make those couple of points, and it's a pretty simple construction timeline, you know, three to four months, we're done, this will be the fourth one we're doing, so. We actually were working with Fortunato Construction that did our other three and built the all these right across the street, so they're very familiar with the. With the area, and we've worked, uh we've worked closely with Deb over the past several months. Um to design a, a site plan that's compliant with all the regulations and not in need of a variant, so that's our goal, we're very excited. To hopefully join your community, it'll be a real privilege, and um with that, I wanted to turn it over to Bob for, for uh. He, he's our civil engineer working on the project and helped us through the wetlands process and the, and the site plan here. Hopefully Bob is, is able to chat.
Yeah, I've allowed him to talk, um so he should be able to unmute.
Can he share his screen to show the drawings?
I'm texting him right here.
Yeah, he has his hand up, but um.
Deb, can you, uh Bob is saying maybe his phone number is not yet unmuted, just his computer?
No, I've um, I've allowed him to talk, okay, I'm gonna remove permission to talk and then I will add it again.
This computer doesn't have a microphone.
Alright, I've. Allowed him to talk.
He's gotta unmute himself.
I know, on the phone.
Would you hold your conversations outside, please?
So we can see your screen, Bob, but um. It, it, it appears that by your phone, you're still muted.
Alright, he's gonna try to dial in from another number, I'm so sorry, um everybody. Looks like we've got the site plan up.
Alright, Bob, are you able to speak now, because I can see you're on here twice? Well, maybe he's gonna call it again.
So Deb, I, I see two Bobs dialed in, I see the, his computer's on, and I guess his computer doesn't have a microphone, and then he's dialed in. This zero three zero nine is Bob.
Absolutely, and I see him, and I've asked him to unmute, um I've allowed him to talk.
And I have him on the line here, but.
And it looks like he stopped sharing his screen at this point.
Are, are you on hold on the other line, Bob, is that why it's still showing as dialed in, even though you're talking to me?
Yeah, I'm on hold on the other line. It's, it's, it's showing up on the uh, on the Zoom as being muted.
Uh as the host, are you able to unmute, like?
I am, yep, I've done that a number of times, so now I'm gonna remove permission to talk, and I'm going to allow him to talk.
And on my screen, it still shows a little red.
Yep, mine too, mine too.
That's on the phone. It's clearly on the phone, it's on the phone. There's probably two different settings on that phone to un, unmute that phone, maybe it's the sound on the side. Right, and then there may be another thing, as you, as you typically go through, you, you'll see. That the phone is, is uh mic on or off, so it's one of those two settings. So Bob, can you try going back to the line that's dialed in and unmuting?
Yeah, let me, let me try swapping over to that, and I'll put you on hold for a minute here. And Jeff, if, if I go.
Alright, well, I mean, what if I put him on speaker online, can you guys, Bob, can you try talking right now?
Yeah, uh i- is there something, if I go through Jeff's phone, is, is it something that you guys can, can hear?
Is that loud and clear, guys?
We, we can hear.
Okay, that works, Bob.
Then, then, then we'll go with that, um Deb, let me, I'm gonna reshare the screen again, because I. If that was part of the problem or not. Okay, so hopefully we'll get past these technical glitches here. Uh my name's Robert Weeway, uh I'm a licensed professional engineer and principal with the firm of Cottis Boden Associates. Uh with offices located two sixty-three Boston Post Road in Orange, Connecticut. Um and we're here tonight on behalf of the applicant, which is uh Faulkner uh Grotten LLC. Uh with Jeff Kimberly as uh as partner partners on that. Uh the proposed project is for take five oil change uh development uh located at six seventy-one Long Hill Road. Uh the property is approximately zero point eight nine acres in size. Uh so what I've shared up on the screen right now is the existing conditions and survey sheet. And um what uh with that basically shows is the condition of the site a- as it presently sits today. So what we have is there's quite a bit of pavement that's presently on, on the site right now, and that's crosshatched or with the shading. And I'm just kinda highlighting the area, what exists out there for existing pavement. This area that's central to that was the site of the former restaurant uh building, which was demolished uh sometime in the past. Uh the remaining portion of the property going down to the south is uh is a wooded area. Uh there's also an existing drainage easement uh along the uh westerly and southwestly corners of the property. And this drainage easement uh has a discharge pipe located down in the southwest corner. And that basically picks up uh storm drainage from the Meridian Street extension um drainage system. Uh also on, on the property, we do have some wetlands that were located down along the southerly property line. And uh we did file and submit an application to the Wetlands Commission, and that application was approved. Uh back on November twenty-eighth, I believe. So what we have is um the topography is generally flat up in the existing developed area in here. Uh with slopes being uh relatively gentle and through this area here. And then it does get a little bit steeper as we get down towards the uh, towards the back end of the property up, up and through here. So the actual uh site plan itself, um what I'll do is I'll get over to sheet S P one, which is the site plan. For the proposed development. And um the facility is gonna be approximately seventeen hundred square feet in size. As depicted by the shaded area here for the building outline, uh consisting of a single story. Will have a total of nine parking spaces associated with the site, eight along this back corner. And a handicap spot uh wedge between uh the building and, and the rear uh parking area over and through there. Um one other point that I, that I wanna make, let me just bounce back to the existing conditions plan. Um as part of our proposed development, right now, there are two curb cuts that exist going out to Long Hill Road. The most northerly one is proposed to be abandoned. Um so we'll be left with one access uh going out to Long Hill Road. Uh this has been confirmed with the state D P O T and the conversations with them. Uh the one request that they had in here was to add some notes to the drawings that uh. When this gets abandoned, that the curving will be replaced, the sidewalk will be replaced in that area. The sidewalk will be replaced in that area, and any of the other landscape area will be loamed seeded. And those notes have been added to the demolition plan. So bouncing back to the site plan again, we did have with regards to the traffic flow. So we basically have the entrance, which is going to come in from Long Hill Road. They'll come in through this entrance here, drive around to the rear of the property. And then they will enter the building for the oil change through one of three bays coming in through here, where they'll drive in, drive into the building, have the vehicle serviced, and then exit the building through the front of the building, making a turn, and then getting back out to Long Hill Road. Now, the exit going out onto Long Hill Road will be a right turn only, so there will be no left turn permitted. And again, this was done in conjunction partly with the state DOT. So that, in our opinion, will be a big improvement over what was out there today, you know, with regards to getting out of the site and through that area. Some of the other site amenities, we have a dumpster pad up in the back area here. We've included a bike rack along with a split AC system located just to the north of the sidewalk area through there. And we've included the EV charging stations down in the southwest corner of the parking. And David pointed out during her staff review comments, we do need to add some notes to the drawing to indicate that we'll be installing the underground conduit for EV red to that area. Now, we do have a 10-foot sidewalk that's going to be installed along the frontage of Long Hill Road. And with the way that works out, it'll be partially located within the state right-of-way and partially located on our piece of property, and we have included a sidewalk easement to extend over the sidewalk area through there. The utilities for the property, and I'll bounce over to the site grading plan, will all be underground, and it'll consist of sanitary sewer. There's an existing sewer connection located in this proximity here for the past restaurant use. And we'll be basically tying into that and providing service to the new building. We have an existing water service that comes in to the property. And in a similar manner, we'll be making connection to that and tying that into the building. The electric will also be underground. There's a transformer, an existing transformer located at the northeast corner of the property. So we'll be making the tapoff of that for the electric service, as well as the underground communication lines that will be going into that area. Now, in going through, I'll bounce back to the site plan again, which is SP1. One of the things that Deb and I had spoken about earlier today, we will be moving the building closer to Long Hill Road by 1.7 feet. And that's basically being done to meet the zoning requirement for ensuring that the proposed building is no less than 20 feet and no greater than 40 feet setback with regards to the front yard. So we had a little bit of a misinterpretation. We took it to mean the closest part of the building where we had the pileisters here. So we had originally shown the 40 feet, and Deb pointed out that that was not correct. So we, on the revised plans, we will be moving that building forward by 1.7 feet to comply with the zoning regs. There's no significance with respect to the rest of the stuff by moving the building to that particular location. I'll bounce over to the site grading plan and briefly go over the storm water management plan, which is reviewed in depth with the inland wetlands application. But basically, we have two storm water management systems that are being proposed. One for the front portion of the property and the second one for the rear. The one that's up in the front will be picking up basically the drainage that's in front of the proposed building, directing it down to trench drain and then a water quality structure in through this area here. The water quality structure will provide for removals of sediments and floatables that would be attributable to stormwater that's generated in through that area. From the water quality structure, the flow will be directed to a series of underground galleries, which are highlighted in this area. And once the capacity of those galleries are reached, the overflow will tie into the existing system or the existing catch basin located on Long Hill Road. Now, for the rear of the system, in a likewise manner, we'll be collecting the runoff from the proposed parking area here, as well as the roof drains, which will be coming off the back of the building. And again, everything will be directed to a water quality structure for pretreatment, with the overflows being discharged to the gallery system. And in this particular case, the overflow will be directed down to an energy dissipation pad down in this general area here prior to discharging into the adjacent wetlands. And with respect to the landscaping, which is shown on your sheet SP4, we provided for landscaping of all the non-paved areas of the developed area associated with the project. So we provided for a 10-foot landscape buffer or landscape strip across the front of the property that is not paved. And that area, that area will be planted with hydrangea, honey locusts, and ornamental grasses and ornamental grasses. The area adjacent to the exit, which is down in this general area here, we'll see some ornamental grasses along with some fairy roses and daffodils. The remainder of the side yards in the rear property will be landscaped in a similar manner with azaleas, hydrangeas, lily turf, daffodils. And we'll also have a number of trees. We'll have some honey locusts up and through this area here. We have also tried to address the remainder of the front of the building. So the areas where we don't have the overhead doors for the vehicles exiting, we're putting in box planters here and here. And in the conversation with Deb earlier today, we'll also be incorporating a third box planter right next to the front door entrance. It'll be located between the front door entrance and the overhead door and transrating through that section there. We've also provided a detailed lighting plan, which is on sheet SP5 of your Smidl package. And we've had the photometrics done on that, or photometrics have been done on that. And to demonstrate that there will not be any substantial overflow or spillage of light from the proposed project. All told, we're gonna have three hole mount and five wall mount or wall pack fixtures associated with projects. So I think that's a quick review of what the project entails and what's involved with it. So with that, I guess if there's any questions from the commission, I'll certainly try to answer them. What I could do too is, we've also submitted the architecturals, and they are included at the end of the package. And the one that I'll pull to the view, because this addresses one of the comments that came back from Deb also. We've included some architectural features for the front door. We've included an awning into this area here to give a semblance of where the main entrance is on the building. So just briefly going up to the architecturals and the floor plan layout. Again, we've got, you've got the entry in the rear part of the building. They'll come into each of the service bays. They've got the trench loops are located underneath where the vehicles will be serviced. Once the vehicle's serviced, it'll exit through this area here, and they go out through our travelway and eventually make its way out to Long Hill Road. We've got the manager's offices located up in the upper left-hand corner. We've got some of the utilities and restroom are located in the back. And that's pretty much it for the architecturals. So the elevations pretty much show it here. And as I understand it, we're not asking for approval of the signage for tonight. That will be addressed under separate permit application. And we do understand that we do need to make some modifications to the signage that are presently shown on the elevation drugs. So with that, we hope that the commission will be receptive to the project, and we believe that it complies with the zoning regs. I'm sure Deb will chime in with that as part of her staff's staff review. So if there's any questions from the commission, I'll certainly try to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Steph, have any additional input?
I do, I do, thank you. So this property is in the MTC zone, the mixed-use town center. Because it is in the MTC, there are a number of additional requirements that you would find here that you don't find in the adjacent CN zone, the commercial zones. For example, the sidewalks must be much wider than the standard five feet. They have to be 10 feet. They are proposing that right there. There has to be, the front door has to be obvious, I guess, for lack of a better word. It was a little difficult on this type of use here, since there are garage doors, but they put an awning over the front door. The building in the MTC, as noted, has to be either, it can be no closer than 20 feet, no further away than 40 feet from the front property line. In my staff report, I think I said it was going to be 38, which it was at the time when I wrote it. When they made some modifications to address required landscaping along the front of the property and in front of the building, it shifted somewhat, which is why Bob noted that they will be changing the location of the building to make sure that the entire frontage is 40 feet from the front property line. One thing that he didn't note, so this was a former gas station in the 1940s. It was a gas station. They did have a phase one and a phase two done on the property and did find some residual contamination, a small area from where the underground tanks were, that will be removed as part of this project. What else?
Correct.
So they are proposing EV charging stalls too, which were pointed out to you. They did not show which. So 10% or two of the stalls have to be EV ready. They have to have EV chargers. 25% of the stalls have to be made ready. So one of my tech items will be to actually show that which stalls will be made ready. They're not showing them right now on the plan. I think that is about it. They're, you know, they're addressing all the bicycle parking, landscaping. They've done all of the required shade trees. And we do have information from DOT that indicates that they will be allowing the closure of one driveway and the southern one, I guess, is what it is. Southeastern one will be the main entrance in and out, and there will be a no left turn coming out of there.
I'll run it up to the commission then for any questions or comments. So Al, start with that.
Let me start with one that's not necessarily for the applicant. Is that we have a 10-foot concrete walk, which is huge, but that's because it's the MTC zone. But the reason that it's there is because this is pedestrian-oriented. Which this corner, not just this building, but the corner is not pedestrian-oriented. And will never, well, it could possibly be in the future, but at this juncture, it certainly isn't. And I would say that having a 10-foot wide, it's only a foot smaller than a roadway would be, is actually inappropriate there. It's actually a detractant. If there's some way we can agree, one of us here, just to say, let's not do that. I'm sure the applicant wouldn't mind not putting in five foot extra.
It's a requirement of the zone. And this is the very end of the MTC. When you get across Meridian Street, it changes to CN. But I'm just thinking, if you look at the Chelsea Groton Building, right? That's also in this zone. They have a 10-foot wide sidewalk they've installed there. And as, you know, as other ones get redeveloped.
All right. In front of the Chelsea Groton Building, I'd say, sure, that does make sense. And here it doesn't. And we just have the wording has gotten in the way of making sense. So.
Yeah, I'm not sure we envisioned, you know, an oil change facility, but it is definitely allowed in the zone.
Yeah, definitely allowed, and definitely doesn't need.
Yeah, we aren't looking for that type of, they could put benches there.
But nobody's going to sit on them. It just doesn't make, you could put something, but.
Well, if they're walkers or.
I mean, in other, if this property were larger, we'd require public space. It's not required here.
That's true. Now, this question is too, was there some other limitations on how you could site the building that I'm not seeing? I just mean, it's where it is, is kind of plugged in into a corner. Could it have been elsewhere? Or I just want to know what the other limitations were? Is there something that would stop it from being on the south side or farther back? Just what was your thought process there?
From going further back, we do have the requirement that.
Okay, that you do, right.
20 and no more than 40. So right now, we are kind of pushing it back as far as we could get it. So the front of the building is going to be pushed back to that 40-foot maximum front yard setback.
How about northwest and southeast?
Well, again, I think what's driving this also is that we need to have our thoroughfare or our travelway on this side of the property, just to facilitate the traffic, because once you get up to the intersection, this becomes with making the turns off of Long Hill Road, the traffic coming from Meridian. You don't want that driveway access up here, which is the driveway access that we're closing off. So I think if you're asking the question, can we slide the building from here to here? The answer is yes, but then that makes the the travel way to get in and out of the site extremely difficult. Quite frankly, it may be a little on the dangerous side if you were to try to put this entrance up here. It's, in my opinion, it's putting it too close to the, it's putting it too close to the intersection.
Like, you've answered my question.
The way that we have the driveway entrance or the entrance to the property is the most appropriate location.
Okay, and you answered my question, but what I'm actually looking for is that what the problem would have been if you had the, if you had your site plan looking exactly the way it does, where it is in the southeast corner of the site, and mirror imaged it so that the driveway was on the northeast. We're familiar with this kind of property. Walking distance to this one, there's another oil change facility that has a very similar layout. Its driveway is on the northeast side or the northwest side. And the wisdom of that is that when you enter the property, the way you have it set up right now, let's just tell the way you have it set right now, when you drive into the property, you, and you've done nice big radius there, 18-foot radius coming in. So nobody's going to slow down to two miles an hour to come in. They'll come in having sped up to come down Long Hill Road. And they'll come in and cross over where it says the words New Asphalt Drive, and cross over and come behind your building. At the same time, people who are exiting the building out the front are going to turn right and cross over that same point to turn right. You've given yourself a conflict there. That wouldn't be true if the driveway were on the opposite side of the building. So if your building was actually closer to the old, to the existing building to the southeast, the old Pizza Hut, I believe, which is, well, that's the back of their building. So if you had it flipped over that way, you would avoid that conflict. The driveway would be on the correct side each way.
Right, I think if what you're saying, then to take the building here, slide that down to the side yard setback, and then
Flip everything.
Traffic come in that way.
Yeah, well, and you can move, that entrance doesn't need to be, I mean, you had the two existing driveways. The place to put the driveway is, none of the above is somewhere near the middle of the site. It still puts it far enough away from the intersection so that it's not a conflict. It still puts it far enough away from the intersection so that it's not a conflict.
Yeah, I I again, I I don't think, because DOT was looking for us to have that driveway entrance as far away from the intersection as possible, which is, which is what we've achieved here. So a- again, when we start taking a look at shifting the the entrance from here to here, that thirty or forty feet can make a big difference. In terms, because you've got, you've got the queuing that's taking place up here with with the traffic lights is is also a concern too.
Why?
So in part, in part, that's one of the reasons why, you know, we've got no left turn out of the, out of the facility, but then the ability to be able to turn into it, if you're heading north on Long Hill Road starts to become a factor because now you're queuing at 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 the intersection.
Well, actually, that's a benefit because you actually have the left turn lane there.
Yeah, but yeah, we're not getting, yeah, you won't get, you won't get the driveway entrance so far far enough to to really make that effective, in my opinion. Yeah, because I understand, I understand what you're saying. If you're up here, then you, then if you had the left turn signal, you would come come in through there, but.
No, that's not, no, no, that's not what I'm saying. No, I I'm saying that's. No, that that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that if you're going to turn left into that facility, uh, right now, you're going to pull into the left turn lane and where it says the words Route One, you'll pull over to the left and turn from there. You're allowed to.
Yeah, right.
And what I'm suggesting is that if you make it so that you get to the word hill and turn left.
Yeah.
So I'm not real, I'm going. You almost, not not quite. Yeah, well, in fact, that's possible too. You could almost, that's it's been suggested you could almost leave the entrance where it is and just kind of reorient it a bit so that it accepts. Well, no, you can't quite do that. I don't know if you'd do that, but because the idea is to.
Because I think, you know, part, like, part of the issue, I think, if if I understand what what you're saying is you want the driveway to basically come in front of the building, come around the back this way and then go back out again. And that's going to create, I think, a lot more issues coming up and coming up into that front portion.
No, if if you do.
I mean, it's not like you've got a tremendous amount of traffic that's going to be coming in in and out of here. So if you have one car that's exiting the bay, if you have a car coming in, I mean, you know, the car, the car that's exiting is going to wait for the vehicle that's that's making the turn in into the facility to clear the area before before they come out of this and and make their, make their turn out of the site.
Well, I I would hope so, but I'm looking at a at a conflict that norm that's designed into this. There should, there could be zero conflict if this thing was mirror imaged. Instead, there is a conflict and we're hoping that people coming out after having their their oil changed are going to crane their head around and and wait for no, the traffic to completely clear before they actually even enter the driveway. And that's not the way most people roll.
No, it's it's a good, it's a good thought. I I I just, even if we made it a mirror image, the cars would still be kind of crossing each other as cars come in and cars exit, I I think.
No, they wouldn't cross each other at all.
If they, if we just slid this down to the bottom right of the screen.
Right.
Like cars coming out of the bays, like the left bay and the middle bay, you know, wouldn't they still pass cars coming in and 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 the 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 width here because of the setback regulations is is not as material, I think, to have like a a lane coming in and a lane exiting without without a, like, I think it's it's relatively tight there, given the setback reg, I think these are great ideas and I appreciate chatting through it, but as I'm looking at it, I think it might be tough to do, given the setback regulations.
Yeah, because that that twenty-six six is going to be reduced because again, we've got to slide the building forward another one point seven feet. So that gets down to be like twenty-four, about twenty-four point nine. And if if all you're doing is turning, is turning the vehicles out of the building at that location, that dimension works pretty reasonable. If you're going to try to have vehicles turning out of there, then also introduce a travel lane that would be going in the opposite direction. Um, I I think it just, it just makes that overly overly complicated and and it it doesn't work as well as what's here. I I I do get the point that you're trying trying to make. If, you know, if we didn't have the the front yard setbacks to contend with between the minimum and maximum, the building could slide back and then it opens it up for for a lot of, you know, for some other opportunities. But I think given what the regulations are currently telling us, we need to comply with. Uh, it's 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 very difficult. It would be very difficult to get that travel lane from one of the building and then also have cars exiting the building at that at that same location.
And and it, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but we have a, what, a twenty-six foot wide entrance? So we can have an in lane. We have enough space there, I believe, without needing a real turning radius to have kind of an in area and out air arrow, right? Um, so guys coming in will be on the bottom of the screen, go around and guys going out will be kind of on the on the left hand side of that opening so that, um, so they're not actually traveling on the same lane.
Yeah, and again, I I I don't think the the internals are are going to present any significant issues because again, it's it's not, it it's not a high volume, like we've got, like, we've got ten vehicles per minute or something like that that are coming in and going out. Um, you know, the traffic patterns are going to be much much lower than 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 that. And I, you know, from what I could see with the design that that we came up with, uh, it can be handled internally.
Okay, I'm I'm not seeing it that way, but we'll see what's fine. Fellow commissioners think on that because I I see it that if you exactly flip what you've got here, north to south, kept everything else exactly the same, except that the right hand side, therefore the exiting twelve foot part would actually be in front of your leftmost bay. It would actually be less confusing. You could actually have the sidewalk in between. You could completely divide up the in the incoming traffic with the outgoing traffic. So, um, we'll discuss that further. I'm I'm kind of concerned that it would take, because it's so innocuous, because there's just, you're right, there's not twenty cars coming out per hour. There's one every twenty minutes, I suppose. If that, maybe more than that. And that's, uh, no one will expect it. There's, you you've designed in a conflict that didn't need to be there. I understand why, because DOT said, please put it as far away as you can. But I think it overshot and you shouldn't have it quite so far.
Going to be the other big constraint that you have. If and and again, if I'm understanding correctly, you want the vehicles to come in like this and then come around that backside.
No.
Radius.
No, 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 no.
You're doing a one, you're you're going to do a one eighty turn.
Hold on, Bob. He, uh, he was actually different thought. I'd love to hear which.
I'm saying if you move that building southeast. I don't know how far you can go, thirty thirty feet, twenty-five feet. So that your driveway and your entrance are on the northeast side, except it doesn't need to be all the way to the northeast side.
Well, you're.
So no, I'm not, I'm I'm not crossing anything in front of the drive, in front of those bays.
I've got somebody coming in off a long hill road. They've got to do a one eighty turn.
No, they don't.
Because, because that, because now this travel way is gone, because that's occupied by the building. So your travel way now has to come in front of the building, come around this side and then then load up to the back. This part here will not work.
Only if you leave the driveway entrance exactly where it is. If you move the driveway entrance thirty feet northeast, northwest, then it won't do that.
Tell you that DOT is not going to take that.
I'm unconvinced of that, but the DOT asked you to do something and they didn't know what other parameters there were. Instead, do as much as you can in order to keep traffic not conflicting with itself. You'd say, this is as much as we can. Uh, I don't know how many accidents were there while there were two driveways. I know it's a good thing to do to leave some space at the intersection. But I don't think the extra twenty feet one way or the other would make any difference to them. And I think we're trying to second guess what DOT might think based on what they said.
Oh, yeah. Well, again, I mean, this this is the plan that was submitted to DOT and it was with the premise that that northerly driveway entrance is getting closed off and abandoned and what we were told from them is that they wanted that entrance to be as far away from the intersection as possible. So if we're taking and moving at thirty to forty feet in the other direction, they're going to say, well, that's not as close to the to the property line as you can. And again, DOT is going to be more concerned with traffic, with traffic patterns and potential accidents on Long Hill Road. If there's something that's happening internal to the site, that's going to be farther and fewer between. And quite frankly, I think even with the design that's here right now, I don't think we're going to have eh, any significant issues with the with with the traffic patterns.
Can I just ask one clarifying? Uh, come, I I I understand, I guess, the suggestion of perhaps sliding it down and moving the entrance, but we, I believe we have a, um, what's labeled as a flush directional island on the entrance. So I believe it'll be pretty, um, you know, apparent, this is an exit. This is an entrance, as in the left of that or the above that is an exit, the bottom is an entrance. So when you come in, there there will never be an area where the the in traffic will be crossing the out traffic. So it wi- with that, um, it it seems like in my mind, and and this is good getting your guys' perspective, but as I was looking at it, it it didn't seem like there would be conflict in the flow of coming in and exiting. Um, so it just from the commission's perspective, where do you see the the highest level of risk from this? Is this when someone's exiting and and maybe taking a right, when they will have to be taking a right, when another car is maybe coming in?
Two parts. One is when they're already there, they will be blocking the entrance. When they're there, they see traffic coming. When the the car is pulled up and is now occupying the space where the word drive is, where it says asphalt drive, the car is going to pull up there and sit there and wait until until traffic clears.
So ample room for.
Hold on, Bob.
Making a left turn or a right turn in.
But they're not, they're not going to line up ninety degrees with the exterior. They're coming out of the side, out of those one of those bays. And they're going to be at an angle lined up with the word asphalt drive, waiting to get out.
But they won't be on the left hand side and they'll be.
They'll be on the right hand side. They'll be on the right hand side, exactly where it says asphalt drive. They're going to pull out of the bay. And in fact, they'll be somewhere where the word new is, if you can see that even more closely. That's where the car will be.
If you have a car that's coming out of the bay, that car is going to be stacked right here. Because they're they're not going to stop here. They're going to come, they're going to pull up to the, because the curb line, the curb line is actually out here. So you've got, you know, that car is going to come out and if if it has to wait for traffic clear that's heading southbound on the on the, uh, Long Hill Road, that car, that car is actually stacked right here. It's not, it's not stacked back up here. So this this lane coming in is is fully available. You know, so so the only way that that wouldn't work is if you had two cars, if you had two cars that were stacked up here. And then either two cars that were stacked, if you had one car that's pulling in, there's ample room, room and air for like for them to queue until until this car clears.
Can we swap the in and out there and have the out be on the left and the in be on the on the right?
No, that won't work either. That's not the issue. Well, I'm I'm trying to place a a sixteen or eighteen foot vehicle waiting to get out, not pulling right up to the curb line to do so because they don't want to get hit by oncoming traffic. Or pedestrian, they're going to not even want to be on the sidewalk in case there's pedestrians. So I've got an eighteen foot vehicle and the tail end of it is going to be right in the way of somebody coming in. And they're going to be approaching at a, okay, pretty, pretty good clip. They're not coming in one mile an hour. They've just accelerated as they made it across and down Long Hill Road. So that's not the way I'm seeing it. I'm seeing that, I understand why I did it, mostly based on a comment by DOT. Uh, but I think there's some other factors to be looked at here. And this is going to be a a problem that you've designed into it. And I don't know what signs you could put up or what mirrors you can put in to make it not happen. The right answer is design it out of it, which is to flip flop this and get the entrance some distance to the northeast, to northwest, rather.
Deb or Bob, are there other zoning, um, uh, considerations for sliding the building down? Like setback related?
Well, no, I think, you know, in in terms of the building, I think, as they're pointing out, the building can come right down to this, uh, side yard setback. So I think that's that's the premise. If you move this down, if you move this corner of the building to the side yard set setback, that that would meet the zoning requirements there. You know, what's what's at issue is moving this entrance further up, up closer to the intersection.
Well, we could try to leave it as close as possible to where it is now. I mean, the exit, you know, being where it is is fine. And it's just a matter of, I guess, can folks come in and pull around the building without getting up in the way of folks exiting?
Yeah, if you're exiting, you're going to cross over the traffic coming in and you can't see it coming in.
Yes.
That's. No, it's a, that's what the problem is.
That's it.
Yep. It's not, you can't, you don't have the time or space to see that. Because you aren't going to have visibility coming down Long Hill Road, somebody turning in.
And then that car's.
Well, it's not a backup. I think it's, it's in the driveway, in the driveway, you've got a conflict of car, of traffic. I don't think it's realistic. Because they're going to be coming in it doing what, ten fifteen miles an hour? And then the guy's going out, he can't see him coming in.
He doesn't. Well, he 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 might, but I think the tendency will be what he's looking is, I got to get out into traffic. And I'm watching pedestrians.
Got to cross over.
He's going to cross over.
I mean, he's looking at somebody coming in hundred and eighty degrees from his direction of traffic. He's not going to notice.
Right. If we're happening out in the street, that's what you're looking for. You're not looking for, you're not looking at it in the driveway.
Oh, it's in the driveway.
Yeah.
It, I don't think it's realistic.
And when I, when I insert the size of a vehicle into this, that's when it it really doesn't, doesn't work for me.
Yeah, because I think anything that 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 you're going to have to do with a vehicle that's heading, uh, southbound that Long Hill Road and them having to make a hundred eighty degree turn, uh, the radiuses, the way that we have them right now, aren't aren't going to facilitate that. And in order to, in order to probably be able to get the proper turning radiuses in there and comply with the forty foot setbacks, I'm I'm not going to have with to 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 make that work.
But but he's he, he's assuming that he's going to have to turn around to do that. And I'm saying, no, if you just push this, if you just, if you just push this back a bit, then you don't have to do that because this I'm using my handy measuring device, which you can't see right now. That puts the end of the building there. So that just needs to get to there. So I think it's a, it's a combination. I I think, yes, you can't shove the entrance the absolute farthest you possibly could down to the southeast. It might be fifteen feet northwest. And there's, there's no way I can, I I can even imagine given that the fact that this isn't even all the way at the corner, this isn't at the very corner, that DOT would have any problem with that if they were asked. Now, if they come back and say absolutely not and have the geometry and saying, we can't stand that because of here's why, then I would understand and you could present that and we would buy it. But right now I'm looking at it and think that fifteen or twenty feet or thirty feet would make zero difference to the way this traffic pattern works in the street. It's still out of the way of the left hand turn. It's still, people could still use the left hand turn lane to come in. Everything stays the same. Pass it on.
Anything else?
If I may, this is Adam Kimberly, uh, part of the development family here. And I just a question um, about DOT and what is the uh, practical implication of seeking DOT's flexibility on the position of the driveway being as far southeast as it is versus moving it farther northwest, northwest? Is that a uh, what what kind of time and process? Uh, what what kind of time and process? And then uh process involved for coming back here to the commission if we were to seek that information from the DOT?
So I'm not sure how long DOT would take to respond to this request. So that's on you. Um, but I can tell you as of as of right now, um, your sixty-five days, your original sixty-five days. Ends um the twenty-eighth of December, okay? Um, you can request another sixty-five days um in order to explore this option. Um. What I'm kind of hearing is if you choose, if you choose not to do that, the commission does need to make a decision tonight.
Well, we have to make a decision.
Unless they request another sixty-five days.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, Deb. Appreciate that uh helpful information. Bob, I lean heavily on your expertise here. You've you've been through. Uh, the DOT's comments and and responded with that expertise in mind, and so. I don't wanna claim expertise on my end that that I don't have. I I I really do lean. On Bob's view, having received all the comments from DT DOT. And the various zoning regulations that this design was the optimal. Uh, given all his calculus of all of those factors, and so. From my perspective, um, I I tend to have trust in that expertise. Uh, but then I also have respect for the commission, and I think, you know, Jeff and I want to be constructive partners here for the town, so. Uh, but I just wanted to let you know that uh I I've put a lot of trust in the expertise of Bob with whom we've worked. Great, because he's heard all the direct uh input from the various agencies. And calculated that this is, you know, the optimal setup uh given all of it, and I just wanna make that comment.
Yeah, and and I think in 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 fairness, the conversations with DOT. Did not involve anything with putting a driveway entrance in the middle of the property. Uh, because again, while we were looking at it, we had two existing entrances there now, and we were giving up the the one on onto the north. And if if I just do it quickly, um, it looks like we would need to move the driveway entrance about. Forty-five feet, give give or take to have to to get that scenario to work. So that's, that would put the. That's gonna put the uh. Most northerly. Right up about this location here. So if we're taking this this point of intersection on the roadway, that we get moved up to about here.
Okay.
So again, that that's something that has not been presented to DOT. It was never brought up in the discussions. Um, you know, again, if it's something that the commission feels strongly about, um. I guess we could go back and give them a mock-up or a red line drawing. To show what that would look like and let them weigh in. I I wouldn't wanna go through the whole. Drafting process because in the back of my head, I'm I'm thinking DOT is not gonna be. Too receptive to moving that that entrance that far up towards the intersection.
Bob, if I may ask a follow-on question, moving the entrance to where you just indicated. Uh, could the DOT, would you anticipate the DOT could have some concerns about? Cars dri- uh pulling into a driveway off Long Hill so close to the.
Well, well, the D the DOT is 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 gonna be mainly concerned. With the safety on on their roadway system, Long Hill. I mean, they will.
That's that's what I meant.
The safety of the site itself. But their primary goal is gonna be ensuring that there's. Uh. Sufficient flow on Long Hill Road as well as as well as at that intersection. So I think it it's it becomes a matter of by pulling this up is it's getting, it in my opinion, is it's gonna be getting a little bit too close. To the intersection movements up up through there. But again, I I mean, without without presenting it to DOT, it's it's a speculation on on my part at this point, but.
Okay.
All right.
Well, so we can continue on with that.
So let me just do. Just but just so it doesn't get lost. So if, you know, assuming you're going to do an extension and. Just wanna make sure it's covered. I have a tiny little one. I should have done this first. On your landscape plan of all places, you've got a decorative light fixture. That didn't show up on any of your schedules. What is that?
On the landscape plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, the decorative light fixture, that is required under your zoning reg- regulations.
For the MTC.
Oh, it just says something?
But on the on the photometric plan, there is a detail of what the fixture looks like, although it's.
Oh, it was there?
Need a bit more information.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't even see what it was doing. All right, all right, as you were.
Yeah, so so if you look at the photo met- metrics, the. The uh covers are here.
They included that, okay.
There's one up here.
Oh, it's up in the corner someplace that I didn't see. Okay. I just wanna say it, all right. Okay.
Bob, just my my one one um. Interpretation I have from your comments is I I for the safety of all users, I wouldn't wanna replace. Uh, potential slower speed driveway, in driveway. Um, flow issue with a higher speed on-street traffic safety issue. Um, I almost wonder if we're, if we might be uh improving one thing but creating a worse. Potential outcome, and again, I'm not ex- an expert, but that's that that would be a consideration just from the general public safety from my purview.
Yeah, and from from what the commission is is indicating, by relocating that driveway up and sliding the building over. That would help, you know, it may make the internals uh a better flow flow pattern through. Uh, but again, my concern, I think the concern of the DOT is, is it gonna make the situation? Would the situation be worse with the driveway location four forty-five feet further up up the road? And and I think. Uh. My observation is it will. I don't know if the DOT will concur with that.
Because we all understand, this was a gas station before. If we put a gas station back here, you'd probably have a driveway much closer to the corner. Because that's the way gas stations work.
Yeah.
So this isn't, this is now the question by any means. If it was a different use. Would almost very certainly have a driveway in a different location.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike.
Um, I don't, the questions that I have are fairly minor, but uh, oh, sorry. Uh. But I also do have uh concerns, and I would sort of uh. Say that I agree with what Hal is saying. I would like to ide- ideally from the. Internal ca- uh car flow, I would rather see that building. Moved to the. As close to the property line as you can, and then. You know, eh eh the way that I I don't know how the DOT looks at it, but there's a. Legal driveway, two legal driveways right now, I would assume. Um, and and you abandoned one. And I was glad when I saw that because it seemed like an great improvement, but I think that. I would be, you know, if there's more than one car at that intersection. It's gonna be blocking the traffic coming in. And then they're gonna be backing up into Long Hill Road if there were two people trying to get into your spot at. Uh, same time. So I have concerns with that. And then the only other thing is I heard hydra- drangia.
Hydrangea.
Which is on our list of proposed. Plants to be removed from the list, so maybe we should remove it now if we can. It's not a big.
Well, that was, that was a different one, I think.
I I think.
But it's gonna be on the new.
Right, it was a specific.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I kind of was thinking in my head, I I should ask Sue, but then that's it. No other questions.
Okay, so.
Thinking of plantings. No, I think um before that, um, I don't know, I went, I've been by there and looked at it and everything. I don't know. I don't necessarily say have the same level of uh concern with where the driveway is proposed. Maybe as others do, and I do trust a lot in the judgment of the DOT and all. And the design, so, but that aside, uh just one small item on the plant list. The one that you've got, the Japanese black pine, is really from. From Japan and China, and um it has found to be invasive when it's um. You know, planted, and so it's on this list by um, and this is like the big organization I'm quoting here. The National or the Plant Trust, and. So they said it's shown some tendency to be invasive. And I have seen it a lot in places, like especially the shoreline, it likes to grow. Um, and since this particular area in town is a fairly sensitive one, as you go over the railroad tracks and all. Um, there is a good substitute for it if you would consider it, and that would be a red cedar. Um, and that's also for some experts to be one to look at, and there may be other choices too.
Oh, so that that's instead of the Japanese black pine?
Right. And and the red cedar will be a well-behaved tree too, and it'll certainly survive almost any conditions, I think.
Yeah, we could certainly look at that.
Okay, great. Like I said, there's probably a lot of other choices, but that's a particularly nice one.
Right, and and now you mentioned the hydrangeas, that they're they're in the process of being removed from your list of acceptables, or are are they? Is has that already been done?
I was mistaken.
No.
Well, it was a specific.
It was just, there was a specific one that we're going to remove, and this is not it, yours. Um. For all I know, I haven't looked at yours in particular, but. It's the funny thing about hydrangeas, unless you, sorry, this is all say, I don't wanna get the weeds, this won't too much. Unless you're growing them in your own yard, you don't really know if the bees like them or not, you know? And I found a lot of mine from Japan or wherever. The bees love them, so you just have to. Experiment, it's not always that, you know, clear unless you see it, so, but that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Good, all right. And if I could just bounce bounce back to, because the one other thing uh that that I'm looking at the grading plan now too. Uh, that would throw in into the mix that right now, the the drainage systems. Both the collection and the galleries are kind of at the low points. Of the respected tributary watershed areas that they're picking up. By moving, by moving the building down to this corner. Um, is gonna make the collection and treatment of the stormwater extremely difficult because. Uh, that's gonna put the bulk of the pavement up in up in this area here, which is actually. Up at the high point of of the site, so. There would have to be some changes, and I don't know if I could facilitate the changes because this would become. My workable area to relocate these galleries to, because in essence, what what you're asking is to take the building. Here and slide it down to here, which would encroach into the stormwater ma- management area. And we're ki- we're kinda governed by. The invert on this pipe right here as far as what we could. Set the elevations to and. What the actual wo- watershed can be that comes into that area. So I mean, that that's just another point of consideration also.
Evan, do you have any uh input?
I do. Um, so maybe it was being remote. Um, I didn't actually get the traffic flow. Um, as much maybe as of sitting there looking at the prints, but I think Hal articulated, um. Which wasn't a concern, but he we've articulated, uh my belief, some of the traffic issues with that. And because of that, um, I was just looking at the draft motion, right? With number two, it talks about. Any revisions this plan, um, it's a lot of people in this, utilities, fire marshal, outside agencies, et cetera. So. I don't know if Deb um or Jeff wanna explain that. I don't fully understand that, so. Potentially, if we were to um vote on this in the affirmative. They could make revisions um post um that, correct, but any revisions. Um. Would therefore be governed by maybe what's best versus what we're asking for here, right? So I just didn't get just the extent of that, um, number two. Was there anything there that other people had seen that we have, you know, that number of people, which I typically don't see in the revision? Was a long question, but.
So, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Do you, okay. Yeah, so so that condition is really meant to cover something that is unexpected. Um, that occurs maybe during the review of of the building permit plan or or the final review by DOT. Um, for example, if DOT, eh you know, suddenly says you you really need to constrain um. The 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 apron and and the entrance such that people cannot turn left and and they redesign it. Um, that condition is meant to say that if if an outside agency has, you know, makes some major changes to the plan, it needs to be reviewed either by staff. And possibly by the commission.
Okay. Um, but for the moment, Groton Utilities has looked at it, the Fire Marshal has.
That is correct. That that that's correct, that's correct. I mean, I, with the utility companies, you know, every now and again, a new transformer shows up that we weren't anticipating. It it that's to address that sort of thing.
Understood. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chair.
It's really boilerplate that we have done a lot of other items. Okay, I. I just had a couple of concerns. One is. On this contaminated soil removal. Is there a note on the drawing or that says what happens? Because it it sounded like it's not finalized. That you have to go through some additional testing after the soil is removed.
During the removal process. Um, Jeff, I think you have your environmental professional on the call, is that right?
No, but what I just wanna know what's in place to make sure that.
Right.
That that has. You know, properly, the results come out good.
So so there's, there are no notes on the plan. There's just the report that was in the file, you know, from their their LEP. Um, but I I suppose we could require, you know, a final report from when it is.
Yeah, but isn't it in here that you have to do some additional testing after the remed?
As you, right, as you remediate, correct.
So what happens if it comes out unsatisfactory? So that has to be corrected.
I, yeah, I'll let him answer, but I think that means that they just have to continue removing the material because. It's gone beyond what they anticipated, but go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, and and so Hanson from Cummings EnviroTech was our L- LEP. We invited him to this, but he may not have joined. He came to the Wetlands Commission meeting and and will be working on us with us on this project. He already did a full Phase One. End of Phase Two, where they did a bunch of testing on the soil. This is very old. Um, uh gasoline, uh so it kinda has dissipated a lot over the years. It's not the heavy kind of VOCs that will that sink down. So it it is, um, it it's not, uh, in his words, you know, a a significant. Issue, but you know, we wanted to clean it up as part of this process. You 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 take the dirt out, it actually gets sent up to asphalt plants and gets uh made into asphalt as part of that process, but. Our goal is to, you know, we'll remove it all, and the point of the testing is just so you kinda, you dig it out, and then you just wanna make sure everything's clean before you you close the hole. Um, and so i- i- it's relatively minor in his experience. It's very um much able to be handled. And uh we would dig out the dirt and um as part of our construction process and. And ship it up to the asphalt plants. I think the ones are up in Massachusetts that that do that, so. That would be our our plan as part of the process, and and again, Hanson's done the full Phase One. The he actually did a Phase Two where he went and tested the soil. Identified where he wants to to dig it out and um and and, you know, as part of the the closure report or whatever, you know, he does some final testing. Just to make sure they've gotten all.
But who who signs off that it's satisfactory? And who looks at that? That's what my concern really is.
Jeff Hanson is on the. Hanson is on the call if you'd like me to promote him.
Oh, that would be fantastic. I I'm glad he's on. I wasn't sure if he was able to join.
Okay, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not sure if you can see me, but.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
That's all it counts.
Okay, so. The site has a very small, the the tanks were up in the area. If you, if, yeah, that's whoever's moving the arrow. It's a little further north of that, north northwest of that there, right in that area. There's a small.
Worried about the technical issue. I'm worried about the administrative process. Yeah. As of now, there's still some testing that has to be. As of now, there's still some testing that has to be looked at, analyzed, and somebody has to say it's okay. Who says it's okay and issues a report and looks at it? That's all I'm concerned with.
Okay, so. Yeah, in 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 tradition of of the standard environmental policies in Connecticut. Um, myself as an LEP will design and supervise the removal of the soil. And I will retest the soils to to indicate that the soils comply with the RSRs. After which we will conduct a period of groundwater monitoring to to uh demonstrate that the groundwater. Complies with the RSRs. The site itself is not in a program that requires administrative reporting to the state of Connecticut. At this time. Um, it is not required under the Connecticut Transfer Act nor. It it could it could it could be entered into the voluntary remediation program. Uh, if if the site owner wanted wanted to do that, but they're not required to under any statute. So basically what will happen is we will comply with the RSRs. By remediating the soil and groundwater to the standards. And I will generate, we will generate a report of findings that concludes. That the soils and groundwater comply with the RSRs as guidance.
And does that get submitted to the town or who keeps that report? Or cares about it? I mean, when you put something in there and and you have an open ending and saying so action has to be taken. There's got to be a reason for doing the action.
Well, the reason for doing the action is to restore the property to its highest value environmentally. Like I said earlier, there's no program in the state that the site is uh adherent to at this time. There are programs that the owner could voluntarily. Be entered into should they want to or a verification by an LEP like myself could be employed. But. Typically, the users of the user of this information would be the owner to to be able to demonstrate to any. Body such as yours or owner or 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 buyer or. Or entity, a lending entity, that the site has a certain environmental compliance. Uh, signature, you know, for any, you know, say for lending or. That nature mostly at this point.
Yeah, from our perspective, we we are working with a bank here and you know, they will be one audience. We are another audience, right? We're working with the sellers. We don't want to buy a contaminated property that, you know, we we can't clean up. So you know, us as buyers want to do this diligence and make sure we clean it up. Uh, the bank that we're that we're partnering with to finance the project is also. Um, an audience for this. And then eventually, you know, if we do ever sell the property, it'll be. Something that we want to be able to demonstrate that it's a clean property without any environmental issues. And that's why. Uh, that's one of the reasons why we want to clean it up.
Okay.
Does that help the panel understand?
Well. It's just that when you put something in a report that says you still have action on it. If you have it there, it's important to go on a report. It ought to have an end to it. That's all.
Can that report be submitted to us? For any reason why not?
Well, it would be good to have it on file, I think, yeah.
For the record.
Part of the record. But on hell's hell's concern. What would it take to put in? The vehicle flow paths like they do for the these uh. Holding patterns. On when you have to have stacking to show how the cars go through this. Entryway and exits and whether it's a safe issue of exiting the property. Cause I I think it i- it's questionable. Right now, I don't think it's a safe. A safe way of having cars coming in and right in the driveway and crossing over right as they enter. You're having cars cross across there to exit right at that point. It's dangerous. Unless you do something with it. I don't know what you do, but. I mean, I just, I would use that as a way of showing that there's enough room in there for people to to uh. To exit and enter. So. I don't, I guess we have to act on this. I unless I would sort of request that we have. An extension granted.
Right.
To figure this out.
Right, that would that would be on the applicants. Um, the applicant needs to request that.
Request that.
That's right.
I guess it would have to be requested tonight or we'd have to refuse.
What, right.
Approval.
So so Jeff, I think as you know, we noted before, the commission does. Has until December twenty eighth to make a decision. This is the only meeting this month. So without an extension, they will have to take action tonight. Um, so it's it's kind of in your court, um. Whether or not you want to request an extension. To allow um some conversation with DOT about shifting the the entrance and exit.
And and the next meeting is January ninth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I guess the the commission's um kind of collective feedback to us as a group. Is to explore a way so the in and out don't cross each other? Yes.
Yes, that's correct or.
Or the crossing would take place away from the the entrance to the road. You know, if it's a cross in the back section, but no.
They just shouldn't cross each other.
They shouldn't cross.
Pardon my ignorance and uh, I'm not an expert in this. Could you make the exit? On the left hand side and the entrance on the right hand side?
What? No.
Yeah, so when you come in, I mean, I know that's how they drive in in England, but could you just?
Yeah, so we want an English oil change.
Yeah, and you could just put a big old arrow there on the paving?
That would be the first, that would be the first thing to get hit would be the arrow.
Well, that that's why I prefaced it with part of my ignorance and I just thought I'd ask um.
I think you have, you ought to demonstrate by drawing. Some size of the vehicles in the box or something as they go in and out, how it would work.
That would help.
That would show what the issue is.
Okay. All right. So we would, we would love to request the extension and and take this away. And 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 I guess work on the plan a bit and see if we can get something with the traffic flow um. You know, maybe it's moving forty five feet, the entrance, maybe there's something we can work that it doesn't move it quite that much and 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 so we'll. I think Bob, it it's pretty much our only option at this point. Would you agree, Bob?
How do we get that tonight? We need it in writing tonight.
We do. We do. Yeah. So Jeff, well, we don't necessarily need it tonight.
No, but we have to take action.
We could have a special meeting if we don't get it.
All right.
Okay, so sorry.
That's what I was.
No, no, okay. So so Jeff, yeah, we will need that request in writing. Um, so. Tomorrow, if you could send me an email and and I'll need to know how many days you're requesting. You can request up to sixty five.
Okay, fax it. Can you just fax it?
I don't know what the fact, I don't know if we have a fax. Excuse me?
I could email you right now i- if it's not a special template and say, can we request?
Not at all. Good. No, you can. You can certainly do that now. But I mean, again, they have until the twenty eighth of December. So you know, if if you end up changing your mind and you don't give us an extension, we will hold a special meeting and they will decide.
Okay. I uh, I, we appreciate that and I'm sure the the commission would not um. Uh, be happy if we requested one on the on the twentieth of December. So we we do appreciate the time you've given us and talking through all this.
That's to be not during normal business hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just suggest that it might be to his advantage to wait a little bit and then he gets more than sixty five days?
No, 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 it will be sixty five days from the twenty eighth. It's not from today. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sixty five days.
Appreciate that idea though. Thank you. I think I think what you're hearing from us is, you know, we want to be constructive partners with the town. We're looking at this as a long term relationship. And we'd like to learn more so that we can all come up with what's an optimal layout. Because we think this is going to be a terrific asset for the town and um certainly want to get off on the right foot. If I might look, put one last word on there, cause I'm looking at this and saying, it's quite possible that leaving the exit lane, just that twelve foot exit lane. Exactly where it is. Might be part of a good plan and just moving the entrance. So the driveway would shift over, the building would shift down, but the exit lane. The curb cut for the exit lane could stay exactly where it is. So the only thing you'd need would be a twelve foot entrance lane. We'd have a wider wider driveway. Am I am I hearing that correctly?
Two driveways.
Please, no, just one driveway. Just have the one driveway on the north side. We're talking about flipping this whole thing like like we mentioned, but you could have the exit. Exactly where it's stay exactly where it is now. It still works for your building. They don't need to be a side by side entrance and exit. There's nothing that mandates it and factors. Sometimes it's handed to have them separate.
And I think there there actually are two existing ones today. So maybe we can live with what's there today. I don't know if.
Well, the existing one that's on north is too close to the, I understand DOT is probably having it too north, too far north. But where the south one, the south, your exit there, it's quite possible. I just don't want to scout that. Leaving exactly where it is. Maybe for your construction practice, it's not a good idea, but in terms of traffic flow, it works just fine. It's the entrance that's the problem. And Bob, we've also heard your comments around, you know, making sure that the building position isn't uh, you know. Creating conflict with the drainage, et cetera. So um, I think that we we take a look at all these factors and and try to come up with.
Major thing to contend with too, because again, we were looking originally at the site plan without uh taking into consideration. The vertical aspect of of the property too. Uh, I I've got one other idea um is possibly bringing the driveway. Uh. In instead of having where we're exiting the building, well, we would exit the building in the same place, but instead of. Going to the right. Carry the pavement around the or carry the pavement around the left side of the building. And then that and then that takes that out of the equation.
Hmm, yeah.
But don't understand the traffic flow there. Well, Bob, can you repeat that?
I don't think we're gonna solve it.
I will need a drawing.
But yeah, so so maybe there are a couple of different red lines um that you talked to DOT about. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
I think that's probably the way we'd want to go with it. I'm not gonna. Go go out and do full full board designs on these things. We can maybe do one uh. Definitely one, maybe two red red line markups.
Yep.
And uh, see if it accomplishes what the commission is looking for.
Yep, yep.
And well, and I think in part, we would want to talk to DOT or or early on because the moving that. Moving the entrance may be a nonstarter starter with them. Oh, is that if that's the case, that then our hands are kind of tied at that point.
Yep.
If DOT is receptive to moving to moving that that curb cut down. Uh, well, a- again, what what I'm looking at under my scenario, the the. Entrance and exit would stay right where they are. But what I do is cut off. The right turn as you pull out of the bays. So that pavement would would actually end. So the pavement line would be brought up to. Up to the end of the third bay and we would have a landscape strip in between. So then your exit route would carry you across the front of the building and then down through this side. And tie in and then you would come up. Sorry about that. So this would get cut off. So we would basically have the the entrance coming in here. So the curb line would flow here. This, we would cut the pavement off here. You'd end up with a landscape strip in between. And then pulling out, you would come around the building this way. And then get into the driveway entrance here and then you'd be pulling out here. It's a little bit longer route to get in and out, but it gets rid of. That would get rid of any of the crossings, traffic issues internally.
That would work. I hate to see you do that because it adds so much paving, but I I suppose it would work. I'd push for the, I I'd push for the driveway move. I'd push for the entrance move.
Does that create any issues with our sidewalk um? Or anything like that? Because what we'd probably end up doing is mirroring the building here too. So the front door went from here to here. And then that would give us the ability to get the concrete to get get this sidewalk from here out to here.
Yep, that that works. Okay.
Carry around to this side. And in doing that, it it really doesn't affect the drain at all all that much. Albeit, it would add a little bit more impervious coverage, but in terms of. Positioning and location of the galleries and the rest of the drainage, that should be able to remain intact.
It could be, yeah, we we'll have to look at it. I'm not sure what's going to happen in the back of the building with people entering into the bays and people trying to exit. But yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
I don't think that's a problem.
Uh, cause they're they're not, it's not a frequent movement.
Yep.
All right. So we'll get an extension.
That's if there's a solution. Yeah, it's the matter of, right.
And we'll have a special meeting if we don't get an extension. All right.
Okay.
So we'll leave it on the agenda. For next time.
Right. Okay.
You're done. All right. Thank you. We appreciate everybody's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. I'll send you an email, Deb.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll leave this, this item stays open.
It does. Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
All right. All business, we have no all business. No business, no applications.
No, we don't have any.
Referrals. We have one from the town of Stonington.
Yep.
Whalers in.
Right, for some minor modifications.
Package. Does anyone have any concerns with this? Since it really doesn't affect the town at all?
No concern.
Since it's all inside the building.
Well, they're adding a storage.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have no concern with that. Then we have the CBA referral for. Another electronics. In multi colors and oversized.
Yep. Right. So so they've asked for a variance to make it larger than the regulations require and have more colors. Than the regulations allow.
Yep.
About no.
I don't think it's compatible with.
Well, there's a reason why we have that regulation.
And there's no reason.
But I don't see any necessity for it.
No.
And it's directly adjacent to some housing, which means. Whatever's going on in there is going to be glaring into those windows. So it's not compatible with. But less is more. I just. Don't see any reason for it.
And I don't see why it's a hardship for them. They don't.
No.
They don't have a sign there now. Why do they need a sign?
Do they have a a rental space within there?
They just have the sign on the building.
I don't think so. No, no. The storage of, there might be a little office, but there's no rental space.
Nothing going on in there. No requires it.
I I mean, yeah, their application says that they will be communicating public service messages.
Well, thank you so much, but.
By the Facebook or something.
Call call Grasso and have them communicate it on there.
Or the Thrive.
Yeah, or Thrive, yeah. Another one.
That's another one.
How much do you have to say welcome and what the tiny? We've done these things so many times and they're just don't get any better.
No, they can't. But they have useless information.
Eighty percent of the time.
Like, well, like the ones I the high school and stuff all. I mean, they just give you the date and somebody had a birthday. I mean, they just give you the date and somebody had a birthday today. Well.
That's true.
And at some point, at some base, the M W R started to place them at great cost and they only had a short life. But, uh, there was a little wisdom there was because it was linked to a master communications plant. So in case of emergency, they could type in a short message and everybody would see. All these signs would come up. So you have this on highways now. You have that kind of thing. I get that. So I'd see why they're becoming popular, but not just as regular. Stealth aggrandizing signage.
They don't need it. No, I can see it if there's a lot of traffic in and out. And it affects the traffic going by, but nobody, it nobody goes in and out of there.
They go by it.
They go by it.
Well, you shouldn't be reading those anyway. Apparently you recommend.
No.
It's strongly.
Strongly recommend.
They asked the question and we replied, right?
Exactly. You do not recommend in favor of this. Okay.
Because it's not.
Yeah. We need to vote on that?
No.
No, it's consensus.
Oh, we have to state that.
For, for some good reasons for.
I mean, something other than it's ugly. Yeah.
Incompatible.
It's incompatible with.
The exception is inappropriate. Residential neighbor. Residential neighbor, but next to it.
And it could be a safety hazard. You can't drive and read these things.
Yeah, but they'd like that because then they could use the.
You're right. They're trying to drum up business.
Increases their business.
You got it.
Don't put that.
That's right.
There's no hardship.
There's no hardship.
For the C B A to find, but yes.
Yeah, that's what bothers me.
Okay.
It's not a hardship. All right. And it requires the use of electricity, which is an environmental concern these days. It's not good. Okay, commission reports, uh, reported chair did receive a, a call from Gretchen over the, uh, Triton Square thing, which precipitated the report that's attached to your agenda tonight. And I did sign, uh, the drawings for the, uh, subdivision on River Road. That's I guess, uh, here on in, uh, all in, or, or whatever. It's, it's one at the north end of the road. Close to old. Close, it was a two-lot subdivision, close to Old Mystic at the north end. And that's all I've had. Reporter commission, does anyone on the commission have anything?
You're not.
None? Report of staff? The staff have anything?
Um, just a couple of things. So, um, at, around the same time that you approved the Paul Antonio subdivision, you approved a two-lot subdivision on High Street. Um, the owner chose not to file that within the required time. So.
Is that just automatically?
Right. It has to be filed within X number of days in order to become.
It's automatic. We don't have to take any.
No, we do not. We do not. Um, in your packet, there is, um, some correspondence from Tim Brennan, who is the building official, um, regarding, um, Triton Square. He, he does not have any concerns about the, the structural issues, um, with the building going up before the wall is complete. Um, and actually he emailed me again today. He was on the site. Did a walk around after that, that rain that we had. And again, no issues on that side.
That was today.
That's today.
Cause that was a pretty significant.
It was. I went out on Monday and saw the same thing, but he physically got out and walked the entire site. They, they had some issues other places. You know, with some excavations on site that were all filled up with water that they had to deal with. Yeah. But, but that's it.
Yeah. Deb, if you could just thank him for doing that, that, I think that's pretty terrific when we really needed it done. So just very, yeah, very efficient. Thanks.
Yep. Yep. It certainly will. Um, so with regards to, um, the gas station that is under construction right now that you heard about earlier today. So again, obvious, I don't know if you've driven by there, but obviously there is site work, there is blasting. Um, the blasting permit was issued by the Paquonic Bridge Fire Marshal. There just, it's in the C N zone. It's an allowed use in the C N zone. There's no public hearing required. So there was no public hearing. Um, the folks who live on Sunnyside Park. Um, Sunnyside Park is a private road. Okay. It's not town-owned. Those properties are also either C N commercial or, or M T C, which, which doesn't mean they're not in impacted by this blasting or impacted by contractors parking on Sunnyside Park. I mean, we've had a number of complaints of folks doing that. We've got direct phone calls to the, the property, um, the, the construction manager, as well as some of the subs. And occasionally there's a subcontractor who is only there for a day or two and doesn't realize they can't park there. Um, but we've definitely had some concerns from the folks on Sunnyside. Yeah. And I believe they have contacted the Paquonic Bridge Fire Marshal about their concerns with blasting, about their concerns with the pre-blast survey that may or may not have been done. I, I believe it has been done, but some, oh, yeah, yeah. But some people were not home and so that may not have been as complete a survey as it would have been otherwise.
Usually they just leave a letter behind.
Yeah. Um, so, so he's been in contact with them. My understanding is Paquonic Bridge has had no complaints up until this point about the blasting.
Okay.
Are we, we requiring that pre-blast or they be done for things like?
It's a fire marshal. A fire marshal. But we did get a copy of it and we required that, get a copy, to get a copy of it. So we do have that.
That's part of the building front.
Right.
Construction building.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's not always requested or.
Right. In this case it was because the, the developer had done a whole lot of, um, exploration of the site and knew what they, they were dealing with in terms of ledge. Yeah. So.
Yeah, it's amazing how much rocks.
Oh, my gosh.
There's always the mystery about what it's going to do to people's.
Well, you don't.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yep, for sure. Absolutely.
But isn't that made? Uh, where do people, where, what they do with the complaints or?
What the impact on.
No, if they haven't, they get it.
That's right. Yeah. Yep.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Does anyone have anything else?
Do not.
Motion for adjournment, move to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Vote in second.
All right. Thank you. Good night, Kevin. Thanks.
Hey, guys. See you soon.